Okay, welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for December 18th. We were scheduled to start tonight with a Governor Stoughton meeting. We're instead going to start with Senator Brian Joyce. So we'll open a Board of Selectmen's meeting and we'll call to order and we will go to citizens speak. And what we're going to do is hear from Senator Joyce, who's got some news and some developments that he wants to talk with us about, and we've asked him to come in and talk with us. And then we will go to the Governor Stoughton meeting and then we'll come back into the Selectmen's meeting and pick up citizens speak a little bit later on after we do a couple of housekeeping matters. So Senator Joyce, thank you for coming in tonight.
Thank you. Happy to be here. I'm sorry I could not attend the last meeting when you had first requested my attendance, but I'm happy to join you this evening. I want to say publicly that I very, very much enjoy working with the Milton Board of Selectmen, with your town administrator, with your town planner, with all of the folks in the -- this Selectmen's office. This has really developed into an excellent team and I'm enjoying a very cooperative and very fruitful relationship, and I'm very impressed with the efforts that are being put forth. I was going to be here a couple of weeks ago to talk a little bit about 40B, and now the news is fairly widely known, but I'm happy to say that the Department of Housing and Community Development has agreed to count all 82 units of the Milton Fuller Village property that are affordable as affordable units toward the town's count. Back about 10 or 15 years ago, I was the Chair in the Senate of the Housing Committee when we made changes to the law. We heard from a lot of communities that they wanted to control their own destiny. Some wanted to abolish Chapter 40B, others wanted to keep it intact. We really found middle ground and provided the town with tools to control your own destiny, but still to help promote the noble goal of affordable housing, the need for which is more acute than ever before. And among those tools, first, the town had a file and have approved a housing production plan. I want to commend the Board of Selectmen, the current Board of Selectmen, the town administrator, the town planner, and my friend John Cronin, the former, you know, town administrator who was nudging it along from our board up there at Fuller Village, to get that task accomplished and to get that going so that the next two things could help fall in place. And one is if the town adds 0.5 percent of its affordable housing each year, it gives you a safe harbor. It gives the town an opportunity to say no to request for comprehensive permits to bypass local zoning. It gives you a year safe harbor, and it helps again control our own destiny. And toward that end, we've been working for a number of years, really for about 10 years. My office has focused on this for 10 years to get the Fuller units counted. Milton Fuller Village was not filed and approved under any sort of comprehensive permit. In fact, people like Marvin Gordon, Tom Flatley, and others had gone to town meeting and got the project fully approved, the zoning fully approved by town meeting. And while there was no requirement, we wrote it into the zoning, but clearly could have been passed without it, there was no requirement of affordable housing. We thought it was a good thing as a nonprofit charitable group, so we set aside 25 percent of the units as affordable. We never got credit from the state because the Fuller property is neither owned nor rented. It's kind of neither fish nor fowl. It's a life lease, and the law doesn't take that into account. We, after 10 years, got DHCD, my office, but working very closely with the Fuller Board, of which I'm one, but Marvin Gordon and I mentioned John Cronin, but also the Executive Director Deborah Felton did extraordinary amount of work, extraordinary. And initially, we got the Blue Hill, I'm sorry, the Brush Hill units counted, and then we got the Blue Hill Ave units counted. So we just added another 49 units to the town's inventory to bring a total from Fuller Village now to 82. Why 49 is significant, I mentioned earlier, if you add 0.5 percent of new housing, affordable housing units to the town housing stock, it gives you the year safe harbor. It turns out that 0.5 percent for Milton is 48 units. So one argument we have is that we've just added the requisite 0.5 percent, because half the units have already been counted, to give us that one-year safe harbor. Second, it adds to the landmass wherein we have affordable housing, and this is the argument now that's been made by the town, by the very capable zoning Board of Appeals, a kind of unheralded but very, very capable group of volunteers for the town, that they've sent into the DHCD suggesting we now have 1.5 percent of the town's landmass as affordable housing, affordable units, and that should allow us to stop any further requests for comprehensive permits and indeed stop to that one's pending and one's near pending. So that's, that was, I think, the reason we were going to be here a couple of weeks ago to talk about that. I thought, but I do want to just go back to, this was a long effort, Milton Fuller Village, of which I'm, you know, I'm a happy salesman for them. I'm a volunteer board member, as you were, Katie, and this organization, it's a nonprofit. It did not try to come in without going through zoning. We don't try to escape taxes. In fact, we're the largest taxpayer in town, and by a vote of the board, we devoted significant resources to try to help make this happen on behalf of our neighbors in Milton, on behalf of the town. So I think that's worth noting, and the efforts of the Fuller Board and also its Executive Director, Deborah Felton. Second thing I wanted to talk about was I had come before a prior board about 17 years ago with an opportunity to get the Mass Highway Yard down on Granite Avenue from the state for free, to have it developed into commercial development and generate some taxes for the town. The then-town leaders and, and I think the then-representative were not keen on it, and it didn't happen. That idea came back to us a couple of years ago, and I brought it to you. This time, the state would want some compensation, and I think the neighbors came out with some significant concerns, which is certainly understandable. It's their greatest investment. A group was put together, I said publicly to the neighborhood, that I wouldn't support anything if, you know, it was, they thought it was detrimental to their neighborhood. I was hopeful that we would build something there that would generate some revenue and improve the neighborhood, but it just, it just didn't happen. I think the committee reported back to you that there wasn't a general consensus for an adaptive future use for the surplus property. Mass Highway was still going to keep some of it. Since that time, I've been engaged in a number of discussions with the Acting Secretary of Transportation, Frank DePaola, most recently today. We met for about 90 minutes. And the plan now for the Mass Highway Yard on Granite Avenue, which I think is good news for the town, is to move their statewide highway operations center to a new, excuse me, four-story office building. They are now soliciting bids from, I think they have three respondents for the architectural drawings. They have some preliminary thoughts, and yet they want to have this be a beautiful facility. I've made it very clear, would expect it to be a positive addition to the town. They also expect to have some increased maintenance operations in the back of the yard. I think will be hopefully largely invisible to any change to anybody going by. The difference will be a four-story office building that will bring some additional workers to the town, support local businesses. At the same time, they're anticipating making significant changes or improvements to the slip ramps on Granite Avenue, both going onto the expressway and coming off the expressway. And Milton residents, going forward, we expect to have the opportunity to jump on the expressway going south at Granite Avenue as well as going north. But part and parcel of that, with Mass Highway having an increased presence in the town, we're working towards some other initiatives. One, we're going to be setting up a meeting with the school department to have Mass Highway's engineers, that'll be housed in this office building, assist with the STEM, Science, Technology, Engineering Math program in the schools. But also frankly, we want to see more state transportation dollars in town. I've broached the subject, broached the topic of a pilot agreement, and I am in discussions on that. Second, in terms of the highway projects, we've successfully gotten authorized through my bond committee. I received today a commitment from Frank that a number of these projects will be moving forward in 2015 and in 2016. First, right there on Granite Avenue, as I also mentioned to the neighbors, that my efforts would be to ensure whatever was done with the yard would be an enhancement and improvement to the neighborhood. I also mentioned that I thought there was an awful lot that could be done to make Granite Avenue a far more aesthetically pleasing and safe roadway. The Mass Highway has suggested that, or Mass DOT now it's called, Department of Transportation, that I'd gotten authorization, had been inserted in the transportation bond bill, they will move forward with a project on Granite Avenue in East Milton where it's, let me see if I have the proper language. They have something called the Complete Streets Principles that enhances pedestrian and bicycle use and safety along the road, connecting bike lanes and pedestrian lanes and streetscape improvements in wider sidewalks. And they anticipate, I think they called it pinching traffic a little bit, to make Granite Avenue far less desirable for cars to leave the expressway, as they do now, at the East Milton Square exit, cut through East Milton Square, race down Granite Avenue, and then jump back on the expressway. Serves the town no benefit, but we get a significant burden. They're going to make, take some steps to dissuade that. We anticipate this project for 2016 at a cost of about $2.5 million, and that whole stretch along Granite Avenue should become a far more beautiful, peaceful streetscape for motorists, bicyclists, pedestrians, and for the neighbors. Nearby, Joe Lynch had identified as one of his most important projects is that portion of Adams Street from East Milton Square to the Quincy Line. And we have some thriving businesses there. We have some new businesses coming in. Excuse me. And the highway, the Transportation Secretary has committed to me an additional $2.5 million to improve that streetscape. Also in 2016, designs would begin next year that improve that roadway from, as I said, from the East Milton Square. We're already making improvements for parking on the deck all the way to the Quincy Line, which, you know, we want to see what happened at Central Avenue and what happened with, you know, say, you know, Steel &amp; Ryan, those other businesses. When the state makes this investment, we anticipate leveraging it into private investment, so we think this will help make the square a more thriving mixed-use development. The other projects that we received, I received commitment for today, I mentioned Fuller Village. This is a lot smaller dollars, but we've heard a lot of complaints about that intersection at Brush Hill Avenue, Brush Hill Road and Naponton Valley Parkway. And that's been designed and ready to go to just, just make that intersection a little bit safer for some of our drivers, and that's going to happen next year. That's been, I got that commitment today. Down the other end of Naponton Valley Parkway, traveling along Blue Hill Avenue, there were some improvements suggested in the Route 138 corridor study. That now will get funded, a turning lane and the like on to Naponton Valley Parkway. And then finally, we're looking at improvements on Route 28 or Brook Road from the Central Avenue, Brook Road, Central Avenue, Reed'sdale Road intersection, what we used to in the old days called Kerrigan's Corner. Those lights are all outdated, and we're looking at about a $3 million project that DOT has committed to me to replace those lights, but also improve the streetscape from that corner to connect to Blue Hills Parkway. So I'm hoping to have that historic wall at Kelly Field restored, the fencing improved, the sidewalks widening, again, some, some pinching to make the road a little safer. Particularly concerned about children crossing at St. Mary of the Hills School, improve that light. So a pretty significant commitment to me today from the Secretary of Transportation to go ahead and fund these projects that we've authorized. What I just outlined totals about $9 million in new highway projects in Milton. And in addition, as Emery and I and Joe Lynch have had a number of discussions on the Blue Hills Parkway, within the past 10 days, we received a commitment from the Department of Conservation and Recreation that has control of that scenic roadway for another $2.4 million in improvements along that road. Again, we're, we're continuing the bike path, we're continuing, you know, having a bicycle lane on all these roads, make them not just for motorists, but also for pedestrians and bicyclists. So the total, just in the past two weeks, we've gotten commitments now on highway funding for the town is almost $12 million.
Wow. Wonderful.
A couple of other things, we, I hear, you know, it's, I remember years ago when I was a park commissioner, Marge Jeffries talking about a bike path, and there was so much opposition, I thought it would never, ever happen. And she was ahead of her time, and that multi-use path now is wildly successful. It goes from, through the last 15 years or so, we've really helped open up the majestic beauty of the Naponton River, which previously had been all hidden by brush and fencing and the like. This multi-use trail now goes from Castle Island in South Boston, and it goes through Dorchester sites that were in my district, John Paul II Park, and then next to it, what used to be a junkyard, now a just beautiful. It comes over Granite Avenue and continues into Milton, follows essentially the trolley tracks and the river, and it stops at Central Avenue. We've had a lot of meetings with the neighbors on what should happen in terms of how that should continue. And when you get down closer to Capeman Street, the neighbors had a very good point. If the bike path, if the multi-use path was to continue in its originally designed course, essentially it would be going through these people's front yards. So the state has listened, and we have changed it so that past Central Avenue, there is going to be a bridge, a bicycle and, you know, pedestrian bridge that will go over the Naponton. It's going to be beautiful, and it's going to bring that bike path to the Boston side of the river, where the residents of Boston have expressed a desire to have this bike path. And so on Monday, I'm going to be joining the governor at a ribbon cutting for what we're calling Phase Two of the Naponton Trail.
Would be there.
At the Ryan Playground in Mattapan. And that will tie in nicely to the work that's being done in Blue Hills Parkway, which will include this connection for this multi-use path as Naponton Trail that will now be able to go all the way out to the Great Blue Hill. So we have some, some pretty good stuff happening.
That's great.
Wonderful news. We appreciate that. $12 million is a great investment in the town.
It is.
And certainly use the funds.
I did see the conceptual drawings of Granite Ave, and that looks wonderful. It really does. The streetscape improvements.
And those are conceptually, they'll be improved upon. And I think that's good news. So for the neighbors down in Granite Avenue and that, that neighborhood tucked up there next to the golf course, I think it's, it's going to be very, very good news and make that street, you know, one of the neighbors had described it to me as, as a runway strip. And, and, you know, she had a point. We want to get away from that and have it more like a scenic boulevard.
Right.
It goes down to one lane, Tom, right?
Well, yeah, and it's, it's hard to say what's going on, but yeah, it was going to be, I think, one lane, yeah, and you want to have bike lanes on either side, or multipurpose lanes on either side, widening the sidewalks and tree-lined street. So it looked, looked really nice. You know, it remains to be seen if that amount of traffic can be handled with one lane each direction, but.
Brian, is there any conceptual plans for the Brush Hill Road Naponton Valley Parkway scheme?
I think it's actually fully designed, and I think it has been for a couple of years. I think it's here in Town Hall. I think it was, I think.
It seemed on a couple of years ago, I know.
Yeah, I think it was the town that took the leadership of it, yeah.
Same one?
Yeah. I think the, the design was chosen by the town, I think. We're, we're just going to fund it.
So that's been approved?
Yes.
Brian, you know what the status is of the safety improvements at the very end of Blue Hills Parkway, the, you know, the Boston line there, the, the traffic light improvements that were going to be made to the, the road re area down there?
We just got that funded. That's one of the things I just, I just mentioned in the last two weeks. We have a commitment for that, two different phases at $1.2 million for each phase, so an additional $2.4 million. So if a person is driving on Elliott Street, for example, and takes a right on Blue Hills Parkway and seeks to do the U-turn necessary to either go northbound on the Parkway or northbound on Route 138 or on Brush Hill Road that becomes Truman Parkway, you take your life in your hands because cars are coming from Blue Hill Avenue at a very high rate of speed at the same time. That's a safety issue that's going to be addressed immediately as part of this project.
Right.
And at the same time, so I'm closer to the Mattapan line, there's going to be a bicycle crossover. It's going to be a lot of traffic calming measures there. We get 58,000 cars a day traveling in that, right there, traveling over that Naponton Bridge. So there's going to be a way for the bicyclists to pass, to cross there. It's, it's a pretty intricate and expensive design, but I think it's.
Sounds great.
Yeah.
Thank you for all your work, especially in the 40Bs and getting the Fuller units counted to our index. That's a, that's a, that's a big deal, so that's quite a help to the town.
Yeah.
You and Fuller did.
Thank you. And I think partly because I'm, I have a bit of a cold and I'm not maybe demonstrating sufficient enthusiasm, this is a big deal.
It is.
There's a lot of dough for the town, a lot of highway projects, you know, the bike path we've been talking about for years. I just, I want to say again, with respect to the 40B and working with Anne Marie, working with Bill Clark, and, and on the highway projects, working with Joe Lynch has been an absolute star, the town's DPW Director, and then working with the board on all of these issues. And, you know, we, we're, we're still plugging with Katie's leadership on a happy outcome at the Henry's property. It's, it's, it's been like giving birth to an elephant. It's slow and painful, but we're going to get there together. It's, it's, it's nice to work with all of you, and I think we have some very good things happening in Milton.
We do, and thank you for everything. It's just a lot of good news tonight, so we appreciate it. And thank you for coming in. We know this is a busy time of year, so. Merry Christmas, Brian. Enjoy the holidays. Okay, we're going to recess the Selectmen's meeting and move to the Governor Stoughton meeting. So we'll open the meeting of the Trustees of the Governor Stoughton Fund, and I believe we're going to be joined by the Town Planner, Bill Clark. Good evening, Bill.
Good evening. Under the update for PULTI, PULTI will be going before the Planning Board on, on December 30th to bring its proposed plan to the Planning Board for their initial looksee, to see that it meets the zoning and to have the discussion of next steps for filing the special permit application. That's one. The second part is PULTI needs to update their, they need another extension on their due diligence letter. They'd like to take and push it out 30 to 60 days.
Because of the Planning Board process?
Because of the Planning Board functions. They want to make sure that, you know, their plan does meet all the zoning. Their original proposal says that, you know, they're not looking for waivers, so they want to make sure that the plan that they submit does meet the zoning board requirements for the new cluster bylaw that was passed at town meeting. They'll be doing that, it is, I think it's a Tuesday, December 30th? It is, Tuesday, December 30th.
Great.
Okay, and our next, we haven't yet scheduled it, but our next meeting probably would be January 6th, which is a Tuesday. Get us back to our Tuesday schedule. We've rearranged it a little bit because of some other committees that have been having meetings on Tuesday nights that we've been attending, but.
I wanted to bring up their extension of the due diligence letter because it expires on January 6th, and should something happen in the meantime, I don't want to get it passed your January 6th potential meeting. So if I get it before you now, yes.
Yeah, it's, the agenda.
Paperwork is being transmitted now. You'll have it this week.
Yep. Okay. The agenda just had an update, so we don't have a request for an extension on the agenda, so we'll act on it on the 6th.
Yes.
Okay. Is there anything else you need to report on, on this, or?
No.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Bill. Okay, then we will adjourn the meeting of the Governor Stoughton Trustees Fund. And we'll go back to the Selectmen's meeting. The first item is approval of meeting minutes. October 27th, 28th, and November 5th.
Move approval of October 27th meeting minutes.
Second.
Any changes? All in favor?
Aye. Move approval of October 28th Selectmen's meeting minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. And move approval of November 5th, 2014 Selectmen's meeting minutes.
Second.
Changes? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, future meeting dates. So January 6th, as we just talked about, would be a good night to have a meeting, especially given that that's the, we would need to either act that night or before on the PULTI request. We're not scheduled to have any further meetings in December. Obviously, if something comes up, we need to schedule something, we'll, we'll schedule it, but the current plan would be for January 6th at this point.
We'll open and close the warrant that day, too.
Yes. Yeah, so again, if, you know, I'm not anticipating anything, but I suppose if, if anything should come up that we need to meet for. Is everyone available the week between Christmas and New Year's?
Local, yeah.
We get the 29th, where everyone's local.
For what?
In case we need to add anything.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Right now, we'll plan for the 6th.
And what about the 20th?
Yeah, that was suggested, but that would only, that's the first and third week, our, you know, our schedule, that's the old schedule. Our current schedule has been to meet at least three times a month, so we may want to do the, schedule for January 6th, 13th and 20th, or the 6th, 13th, and maybe then the 27th. I think we, I don't know if everyone has their January calendars available right now, but.
Yeah, I'll be gone the last week of January.
Is the 20th good for you?
Yes.
20th good for you, Tom?
That's fine for me.
We should probably come from the 20th. Why don't we add the 13th? What about?
MJ of the ZBA hearing that?
Oh, that's right. Yeah, there's a Continued Board of Appeals hearing that night that we've been going to. That's on the Henry's, the 40B project. What about the 13th? Is the 13th good for everyone?
13th is fine.
Okay. Why don't we?
I'll get back to you on that one.
Okay. Why don't we just schedule for the 6th, check our dates, and come back and confirm January dates later. Okay, payroll and vendor warrants.
Move approval of current payroll and vendor warrants.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We'll resume citizen speak. Is there anyone here tonight who wanted to address the board at citizen speak? Mr. Sweeney.
Hey, Bob.
Evening, Bob.
Mr. Cohen, Mr. Hurley, Tomlin, Spagan, Mr. Rizzi. Good to sit here. I wasn't planning on coming tonight, but I'll get specific as to why I'm here. I'm here relative to the other hat that you wear besides the selectmen's hat, which is the Governor Stoughton trustee hat. It's a hat that I've worn for three years, and it was a, a hat that I wore for two-plus years as the Governor Stoughton Land Trust Committee co-chair prior to that. So, I spent more than five years working on the town farm. And I think it's, to no one's surprise that I stood tall with the Copeland Foundation, haven't waived it on that. But when I didn't get a second vote from the then trustees Shields and McGetrick, I made a compromise motion, which passed unanimously, which was to accept the Pulte proposal, Plan C, pages 21 and 22. Those pages and that plan that I just cited were the result of countless hours of work and negotiation by countless numbers of citizens of this town. And I'm here just to ask the current sitting trustees to adhere to the Plan C, page 21, 22, which was the plan that the trustees accepted, which is the plan that went through the court, which is the plan that is in the purchase and sale agreement. If you uphold that plan, and if it is allowed to go through, because I think there's still some issues, certainly somebody like myself has no control over that, you don't have control over, such as like the Native American issue. But if the plan goes forward, like it was just mentioned, that it's going to the planning board, I think it's incumbent on you to send to the planning board a clear plate, a clear message, which is that Plan C. There should be things that are very easily understood, and I'll get specific as to what caused me to come here tonight. The issue of buffer zone came up. In my response to that, well, have no fear. If you're a neighbor, I know what the plan says. It says, Pulte says, we'll maintain 100-foot buffers at a minimum from existing residential neighborhoods. So, to me, a buffer zone is a no-build zone, and in this instance, it would result from whoever lives, like, let's say, on a countryside load or road or a Whittier Road, at the end of their property line, there would then be 100-foot of town farm property before there's structures or pavement, et cetera. A buffer zone, to me, and hopefully to you, is an area where there's trees, natural vegetation, et cetera. And I just, I'm raising that specific so to, so that those kinds of things don't pop up as, as you move forward. And do, do your job as a, as a trustee. And that's just what I wanted to say. And, you know, I'll be happy if anybody wants, I'm starting to feel like I'm 1701 material.
[laughing]
But I'm happy to, if anybody wants to know what the intent was, Mr. Hurley served as a trustee for a brief period of time. Prior to that, Mrs. McGetrick was on board, Shields on board, would certainly be good resources if ever the question of, well, what was your intent when you negotiated? But I think what's in those documents, I think that says it all. And I'm just hoping, you know, that you support, you support as I do, whether, whether it's your favorite or not, because it wasn't mine, but you still, you know, if it was favorite, it was 3-0, let's, let's, if it's, if Pulte's allowed to go forward, let's have Pulte do what they agreed to.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a moment.
You, too.
Thank you. Same to you. Do we have anyone else tonight for citizen speak? Okay, then if not, we'll move on to the animal shelter. Representatives are here from the shelter. We're going to talk about a memorandum of understanding. Mrs. McGetrick?
Mary Ann.
Welcome.
Hello.
Good evening.
Good evening. We're very happy to be here tonight. I'm Mary Ann McGetrick. This is Milton Thomas with his president, Milton O'Leary. And I'm your attorney, and I've been working with him and with the board of selectmen on trying to draft a memorandum of understanding to describe some of the parameters for raising money and for building a new animal shelter, without necessarily deciding at this point where the shelter would be located, in order to make some progress with the project. And I know the selectmen has spent a good deal, deal of time on this. Town council's reviewed the draft document. I know the league spent a lot of time. We had a number of meetings. And more and more details emerge, the more you look at each aspect of what we tried to talk about in the memorandum. So, we reached a point tonight where the league is satisfied with the draft memorandum. I know the board has discussed it. I don't know whether you want me to go through it. You have a, a long agenda, so you should tell me how you want us to proceed. I'm happy to talk about it, you know, not in every detail, but a little bit, so everyone understands, you know, what we've agreed to, or at, at your.
I know there, I think there are a couple of years we might have specific questions, but it, it does create a framework. If you want to say a few words about that, Mary.
In general terms, just so the.
Yeah, just for the benefit of the public watching this, what, what the goal here is. Because it's not a binding agreement, it's a, it's a memorandum of understanding that's going to set the stage for more agreements eventually to be hopefully entered into.
Frequently, when you're dealing with a nonprofit organization, which is what the Milton Animal League is, and, I mean, it's a, a public organization like the town, in order to figure out how to work together, you have to first talk about the, the general parameters for how you're going to work together. And you have to put it in writing, because that's how people begin to find out. They either agree or don't agree on certain points. So, that's what a memorandum of understanding is. It says, we are agreeing to discuss this topic, and this is the framework within, within which we're going to agree to discuss it. It is important, because what you decide to put in that memorandum does limit, to a certain extent, how far you can go in certain directions. So, in the case of this, this proposal, there are a number of issues. One is that the league's been raising money, and the question becomes, well, how, how will the town and the league be able to enter into an agreement about how to spend that money on an animal shelter if that's what they want to do? You need to understand the parameters for doing that. In order to build an animal shelter, you first have to decide who's going to own it once it's built, if money's going to be donated, how is it going to be donated? And you have to decide a number of things about the shelter itself. Is there a maximum size? Are there certain types of things that need to be in the shelter? What types of rooms? What characteristics will the shelter have? What will, what, what energy efficiency characteristics might it have? And so on and so on. There are a lot of details to setting up the parameters for a building project, even if you don't yet have final plans for the project. And then you have the issue of how you run the shelter once it's built. This has been a key difficulty in this process for many years now, because the league wants to raise the money, and the league is currently doing most of the work of running the shelter, which is just a small cinder block building. But they are doing the work of running it. And so, there's a concern that if we build a nicer, bigger shelter, does that really mean the league is asking the town to build a nicer, bigger staff to run the shelter and thereby incur a great deal more operating cost, just for staff and that kind of thing? So, another part of this agreement talks about how the shelter would be operated. And basically, the parameters for that, that we've talked about are that the league would continue to provide the staff, except that the town will have an animal officer, as it does now. And that's probably, most likely will happen, is that the hours of shelter will be open will depend on the availability of volunteers. But there's a commitment that the league is making that it will continue to work to have, to provide volunteers. And with a nicer shelter building, I think they will come. So, that's something that we expect will work even better than it does now. And even now, they have quite a few volunteers working at the small shelter. There are a lot of issues of, of other expenses. Who's going to pay for the utilities? You know, there are more detailed issues that we haven't yet worked out. But some of those larger framework details are in this memorandum, and we've agreed on certain aspects of them. There is a section, there are various sections in this that detail, for example, that if there's a building committee, there will be a building committee formed. This says there will be. The building committee will have a representative from Milton Animal League, because the Milton Animal League runs the shelter and knows what types of rooms you need to have in an animal shelter, just like having a member of the school committee on the, the school building committee. And there are, there is a whole list of things that normally are steps that you have to go through when doing a building project, as, as we all know, because we've done a library, big library project and a huge school project, that the first step is developing conceptual plans, which the league has done, has tried to do for the town. They have conceptual plans. But the conceptual plans are not the final plans, and one reason for that is that there, all the details aren't in there. But another reason is that budget is a big constraining factor. The league has also taken on the task of raising all the money to fund such a shelter. And it has some major donors who have, have said they would like to donate to this purpose, but without knowing the site, and then without knowing how the town's going to work with the league if a shelter is built, those donors themselves may not be sure they want to donate funds. So, another reason to have this memorandum is to be able to go back to major donors and say, look, this is what the town and the league are talking about. Are you still committed? And would you commit more? No, I'm just kidding. But, you know, the point is, is this something you think you can work with, or is there a problem that needs to be worked out? So, we don't run, find out halfway through the process of getting ready to, to have a building committee and everything else, that all of a sudden, you know, our donors aren't really happy with the way we're proceeding, and they're not going to give up, give the funds. That would stop the project cold. So, I don't, I don't know if that covered all of the, let me just take a quick look at the headings. There's a focus section.
Mary Ann, who?
Yeah.
Who hired the architect that did the conceptual plans, and who paid for that?
The Milton Animal League hired and paid for the architect, and how many years ago was it?
Quite a few years.
Maybe five?
Yeah. It was about five years ago.
And that isn't to say, you know, they haven't continued to talk to the architect. Some, the plans are that, that age, and a lot of discussion has gone on since then. And the funding has proceeded in a certain fashion. So, the whole question becomes, as you know, being in the business, costs continue to increase in construction. So, what will be possible will depend on the funds available. The design may be changed a lot, and it's only conceptual design right now. But the league has undertaken all of that cost responsibility to date.
And I'm not sure if it's an appropriate question, but how much did this architect cost? How much did the plans cost so far?
You know, I don't really know. It's north of 50,000 to date. Can.
We should, we can certainly get that information.
Get that for you.
Yeah. Do you have an estimate on what it's going to cost to do the actual plans? Nothing?
And, and if it's a town project, you have to bid the actual architect. So, I couldn't say, yes, we would have an estimate of the cost, but, and, not we, the town would want an estimate of the cost, but it would be bidding the architectural services. And you'd have to define exactly what you want the architect to do. So, that hasn't happened yet. So, we don't have an answer for that, and that's, that's going to have to happen, no question.
But based on the conceptual plans, have you got any estimate on what it's going to cost to build a building?
I think, well, we're.
Just an approximate number?
Approximately 1.5 million.
1.5? That's a 5,000 square foot. So, it's about $300 a square foot.
It's a maximum 5,000 square foot building. It started out bigger, actually. But we've set a maximum, and this, this is a good example of what you do with memorandum of understanding.
Yeah.
The league has agreed 5,000 maximum. The town has said, okay. And we all know it may depend on money.
And the key costs, as you know, are, are the HVAC systems, which we, and the soundproofing, which we need to be good neighbors.
In comparison to the one you have now, what's, what is the, the square footage up there? Bob, do you know what it is, Bob?
Do you know what it is?
It's a stream of water.
Eight, less than 1,000, yeah.
Yeah.
It's certainly not soundproofed or internally. You can't take care of, you have to take animals outside in order to do anything with them in that shelter. But, yeah, much smaller.
We're not going to have any more, I think we've talked about this, we're not going to have any more animals, but we will have more administrative space and space to store things and space to take care of the animals in a way that we can't now. I mean, our storage is, is in sheds that we purchased at Curry Hardware.
Right. And you're looking for a, you have four months down here to make a decision on site selection. When is that from? Is that from signing the MOU, or?
I would think that would be from signing the MOU. And we thought we'd put something in there.
Yeah, and that's really on the, that's the town obligation for the site selection.
Now, you know, we're going to have to see what, how it all works. But we thought we should put in some kind of timeframe and try to work on making a decision.
I think it's, it's important that you put in timeframes, because it, it kind of keeps people on their toes.
I think the one thing we're going to be careful about is the, the estimated utility costs are obviously.
That's the other thing.
A little bit high.
We could, we could go back and go.
Not, not necessarily high for that size building. I don't know whether they are or not, but, I mean, hopefully, we can do something to, you know, like solar, you know, something to, to keep those things down.
All in favor of green systems.
Yeah. And it should be a real tight building and.
Oh, yeah.
Energy efficient and everything, I'm sure, but.
Yeah, we found two features to this building, because it wants to be soundproofed, but we want it to be soundproofed. It has to have a good HVAC system. That's expensive.
Mm-hmm, sure.
And it also incurs expenses for utility costs. It's probably the major difficulty with a shelter, that you, that you right, build the right way, because you won't, don't want to disturb anybody in the, in the surrounding area. But it does increase the cost. And the other problem is just that any new building has to be up to code. This is a larger building, even if it's not 5,000 square feet.
Stretch.
It's certainly larger than what it is now. It has to be up to code, and code requirements in every respect are different than they were, you know, when the cement block building was built. And so, for example, and I, we've spoken with the facilities director, and he's been very helpful, sort of helping us to under, he's here tonight. If you would like him to join us, he's been very helpful to point out to us that, for example, with a new building, we don't know whether the energy estimates from the architect, which are general overall estimates, include parking lot lighting. We don't know whether they include alarm systems. And some of these things may be required or may be necessary for security reasons.
Sprinklers, yeah.
But they, sprinklers, those estimates may include that, they may not. We don't know yet. So, there's more detail to the energy estimate that we gave you that we should be getting.
Mm-hmm.
And we hope to get more from the architect. And if we can't get it from the architect, with the help of the town, we'll get it some other source. But the point really is that not only is the building bigger, and, and not only does the code require things that we didn't have, we didn't have to do in an old building, but we have to design a building that will use more energy because of the HVAC system. And it will probably have to have lighting that would be required for the parking lot, apparently, as a building code requirement, that normally you would not think about doing. I mean, they don't have a parking lot up on, up where the, the shelter is now.
We're not there.
But now with LED technology, that, that cost can be, you know, kept to.
Countering that. Well, so the objective, which is stated in this MOU, is that the town and the league will place a priority on energy efficiency. So, that's a design issue, and that's going to become an issue as you start to get into detailed design, because you may have to trade off some of the energy efficiency costs for some other things, or at least keep things, provide a framework, but not provide every detail of the expense of the inside part of the building. And we don't know exactly what the trade-offs will be, but here are the things that you could do. Yes, you can use solar panels in either of at least the two sites that we've talked about, on the dump access road and on the Governor Stoughton site. There's very good siding for solar panels, which could go on the roof of the building. But if you're going to be putting solar panels on a roof, you also have to think about where the HVAC system is, and, and you'll have to plan the HVAC system also. Thank you, Mr. Ritchie, for pointing this out, so that it doesn't just create a lot more heat and problems for heating and cooling the building. So, these are all design issues that need to be paid careful attention to in this project. So, but if you did solar energy, if you, if you either found somebody to help you contribute to the cost of acquiring solar panels, it would be tremendously energy-saving. You could do a partnership with the company, and then I think you perhaps achieve half of the energy savings for yourself and half go back to the company. That's not as good, but it's better than not doing it, I think. Because I know we've done it in some buildings in town. LED lighting is much, has come down in cost, and it does save a tremendous amount of energy. So, using all LED lighting should help. And there are things like. And there are things like, this building is anticipated to be heated by gas, because right now that looks like the best way to do it. A very highly efficient gas heating system can save a lot of money, but it's more expensive usually to install. So this is, this is the issue that will come up as the building is designed and the costs are reviewed. And there, there are most likely a lot of other things that can be done. I did ask whether the energy committee that the town had had is still functioning, but apparently it's not active anymore, but there are members of that committee who are really helpful to the town, just in reviewing all of its energy use. So I'm hopeful that maybe some of those, or one of those members would be somebody you might look at, possibly, as a member of the building committee.
Yeah. Yeah, I think who we appoint to the building committee will be important on this issue. We'll need somebody who can focus on these energy issues. Now, page six says that the estimated cost for the energy would be 25 to 35,000, but then it goes on to say, "If this estimate does not include the cost of light, fire, or sprinkler system, then that could increase." Do we know what the current costs are for the utilities at the Governor Stoughton Trust?
Next page.
Oh, that's the current cost, okay, I missed that.
Who pays that?
So that's a pretty substantial increase.
The leash law account?
Yeah. So that's, so that's going to be a substantial increase for the police budget, so that, so we will need to try to get on that committee some expertise in the area of energy efficiencies.
Yeah, definitely.
And you have to look carefully at those numbers, for example, the heating estimate, $4,900, maybe the heating won't be more in this new building, if it's very, very energy efficient, maybe it will, I don't know, for the size, it may be, but that's a lot of heat, and that's because that's a totally inefficient building now. On the other hand, the electricity cost is definitely going to be higher, by quite a bit, we know that, when we build new buildings, all of our new buildings have been more expensive. And that's what we have to be thinking about how to deal with and trying to plan, I mean, ideally, in the best of all worlds, you'd be able to create a building that would be close to energy neutral, which means you're capturing enough solar heat, energy, that you, you can offset the rising cost of electricity in future years. That's a great way to plan, if you can do it. And it is good, you know, if you can say it's a goal at the beginning, then maybe the, the nonprofit organization, the town, can work together on that and maybe get some other people involved in that, too, because it's, it's an interesting objective, and it really will be very important in this building. If we're going to have it, we need to figure out a way to do that, as close as we can.
You know, we have to abide by the stretch code? It's, it's a commercial building?
Yeah.
Municipal buildings have to comply?
I spoke to the building commissioner, and he said, "Because it is a brand-new construction, and it's public construction..."
Up here, yeah.
...
Yeah, I spoke to the building commissioner last week, and he would, we have to buy, because we have a green community, we would have to buy it, you know, on a stretch.
Well, that's a positive thing, because...
It's good.
And I'll give you an example. I built a house for myself, Bill knows this, and I complained about being in the stretch code, the energy stretch code, because your heating systems have to be 96% efficient, and you have to spray in the insulation. But I built a house that's 1,000 square feet bigger than what I sold, and my energy bill went down $150 a month.
Cool. Well, we're currently heating the outside at Governor Stoughton.
Correct, yeah, correct. So the stretch energy code will be essential here, 96% efficiency, which your heating systems will be.
But because, because the construction of this building is a little bit different, you wouldn't have all the wind as you would have in a normal household. I'm sure you have a lot of concrete walls and stuff like that.
Right, so it's going to keep it down, too.
But, you know, we do, one of the things we did talk about was really capturing all the solar we can, because we haven't places to building yet, so obviously you want to do direct self.
Right.
So, yeah, there's opportunity to really design it, to capture the self, to start to main solar.
And who pays the water and sewer, is that in your budget as well?
It's in the leash law account as well.
And how much is in this leash law account? What do we bring in every...
$4,000, which includes the animal control officer.
Can you, what is the leash law?
That's the budget for the...
Leash law, the...
The licenses and the fines.
It's just coming out of general, it's, it's just coming out of tax. It's not like there's a pile of money, that's the budget, it's part of the police budget.
The leash law?
Yeah.
I think the licenses and the fines currently just go into the general budget. This isn't a revolving account.
That's a pretty minimal amount.
Something that could be considered in the future.
Right.
But the leash law is primarily the salary for the animal control officer, but it includes the expenses of operating the shelter. And that's in your budget, if you look at the breakdown, you'll see util, various utilities, you'll see supplies. And the interesting thing about that is that you're only seeing a part of the actual budget for the shelter, because the animal league is spending money on supplies, the animal league is paying for the veterinarian to come in and treat a stray dog that comes in and has a disease or something. So the responsibility of the town for the leash law purposes is to take stray dogs and put them in a secure place and hold them for a certain number of days. You don't have an animal shelter, you have to find someplace to hold those dogs, you'd have to board them. So you'd board them with another town, you'd board them with a veteran, veterinary service, and then at the end of the period of time, decide what to do, if nobody claimed them.
And you have to pay for that?
You have to pay for that. So when you think about the difference between what the league is doing and what the town's obligation is, there's an expense there that isn't on, it isn't on the sheet in front of you. You don't really see it, but, you know, I suppose it would be possible to calculate, you know, how many strays are pulled in each year. We don't count cats, because the town's not obligated to take care of cats. And then how, you know, how much it would cost you to board an animal for 10 days, and you could probably calculate what you would need to spend to do that, if you didn't have your own shelter.
Yep.
We've never done that, I mean, I don't think we've even tried to figure that out. But the real point here is that we just, we've always run the animal control operation in Milton, pretty much bare bones. It's been a volunteer effort, the first shelter was built by volunteers, and animal volunteer, people who care about animals and like to work with them, care about all animals, and so you get it, usually when you have, they build a shelter, they want to take care of other animals, too. And that's why they're committing to this responsibility for, for running the shelter, because they want to take in cats, to the, to the extent that they have capacity. They want to keep animals and try to find homes for them. They don't like to kill animals, I mean, it's supposed to be no-kill, and so far, they've always been adopted, I think. Some have a more difficult time than others.
Right.
So it seems to me that the next step is to put a building committee together and come up with some cost estimates.
It would be good to be thinking about that as soon as...
And a strategy.
No, I'd also go and speak to our donors. Our donors.
Yes.
So we're not going to sign this tonight, we're going to wait until you go ahead and meet with your donors, and then we'll take this back at a future meeting. On page seven, we should just point out, 6A, it's a placeholder there, we still need to fill in some information, is staffing ratio? I think that's something that the animal league might be in the best, the best position to know what the current staffing ratio is, but that's one more thing we need to fill in before we sign.
In other words, you mean, how many people are currently working how many hours at the shelter?
Yeah, it looks like it says, "Provide description of present staffing ratio," so it looks like it's just something that...
It sounds a little grander than it is, but that's true, I didn't notice that.
Something we'll need to fill in.
So we, we need to try to get, well, we know, we know, you know who you have volunteering at the shelter, somebody at least must be keeping track of that. We know we have an animal officer, and she's there at certain times, so somehow we need to integrate those two pieces of information.
Just some of the finalized before we bring this back to sign.
Okay, sure. And if you see, I didn't see that, I didn't realize we hadn't done that.
I thought the MOU looked like it was in good shape, it was the electricity cost that is concerning, I think, for all of us.
I talked to Mr. Ritchie, and the league hasn't really had the benefit of talking to him directly, but hopefully they will. But, you know, he also made other suggestions about ways to get information about energy efficiency, and one is to go directly to the utilities. And they will give a lot of help to people who are planning a facility, as to what they can do, possible grants that are available, and that kind of thing. It's just that it is an area of great interest to certain people, I know there are people in this town who really are, who specialize in this kind of thing. If there's anyone who is interested in working on this particular project, on that particular part of it, I think, I hope they'll come to the Board of Selectmen and let them know.
We'd welcome the help.
Yeah.
Now, do you think January 6th would give you enough time to go back and talk with your donors, or do you want to wait a little later?
Sure.
I think we need a little more time, just based on, on their meetings and available holidays. Maybe later in January, we'll bring this back.
Yeah, mid-January, you haven't set your dates anyway yet, so why don't we keep you posted as to whether we've, meetings have occurred, and as soon as they have, we'll need to come back and talk to you, in any case, if, only to confirm that this is okay, or to say there's some issues.
Okay, can I ask, so if we approve the memorandum of understanding on sometime in January, what's the next step after that?
Well, you could start working on some things, what you're talking about is the selectmen's responsibility, of course, to begin thinking about a building committee early, the best possible committee, but this anticipates more, you know, specific agreements. So I would say the next step is...
Site selection.
Yeah, site selection is over here, you've got to keep working on site selection, you do, because nothing's going to happen without a site.
We're working on it.
But while we're looking at site selection, we can be working on what the specific agreement about donating money should be, what the specific agreement about, you know, building the shelter should be, what the specific agreement should be for operating the shelter, because all of those are going to have to be in place to start this process, because these specifics are very important.
That's right.
So I would say all three, the, the bones are here, I've done this, not in this, on this type of project, but I've done this a number of times, and the memorandum of understanding leads you naturally into sort of the, the outline of your next agreement, and that's how you can start. Anybody here, or anyone who wants to look at it, that's how you do it. And then you start saying, "Well, okay, but now what are the specifics that need to be addressed here?" And I think the league would like to keep working. As soon as we agree to this, then we'd like to work, we'd start, we'll list the, I'll come back to you, and I'll give you a memo, and I'll say, "Here are the agreements that we should anticipate having to enter into. Shall we work on them sort of simultaneously, you want to start with one, I mean, whatever way you want to proceed is fine, do this, we'll do it the same way." We'll try to help draft these documents, but as they get more specific, they, you need to commit to really carefully reviewing them.
That's right.
And town council, you know, can give you great guidance, I can give guidance to the league, but the league has to tell me what it thinks should be in these documents. You need to tell town council, and then he can polish up the language, we can figure out whether the language says what each side wants it to say, and then the disagreements can be worked out.
And I think we need to be thinking about the building committee, so why don't we take this opportunity, while we're on TV, to ask if there's anyone in town who has a particular interest in the animal league, or in the shelter, maybe a background in real estate, or energy, or building projects to, construction, to get in touch with us if they'd like to be considered to serve on this committee. We don't know how many people, the MOU doesn't say how many, so we can talk at a later date about what size of the committee we think might be appropriate, but I think we should at least see if there's anyone who's interested, who would like to, and if they are, they should contact the selectmen's office. And there's always a volunteer form that people can fill out, but indicate what their interest is, that it's this particular committee, and maybe we'll get some good, good candidates, and we might have people in mind already, and, and the league will be, will be recommending two members of the league, or delegated appointees, so, whether, I don't think it has to be a member of the league, but you'd probably want it to be a member of the league.
Yeah, that, I think that's, that would work well.
We're very committed.
Yes, we are.
We know you are. We appreciate your patience, because this has taken a little bit longer than we thought it would to get this back on an agenda, so...
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for meeting with us, and we will report back as soon as we've met with the donors, and hope we can proceed.
Sounds good.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Bye, Linda.
Thank you, Bill. We are on to the Substance Abuse Prevention Collaboration, and our Public Health Director, Caroline Consella, is here, accompanied by Vicky McCarthy. Thank you both for waiting tonight.
Hi, Vicky.
We're excited to be here. So we, we've come before the Board of Selectmen to ask for your support, for the Board to sign a memorandum of understanding in agreement to partner with Quincy, Waymouth, and Braintree for a grant opportunity from the Department of Public Health and Bureau of Substance Abuse Services. And do you read the executive summary? Do you want me to go over that a little bit about the grant?
Yeah.
Sure, I think that would be good.
So the purpose of the Massachusetts Substance Abuse Prevention Collaborative is to implement or amend local policy practice systems and environmental change to prevent underage drinking and other drug use, also to build capacity and partnership with surrounding communities to share resources and knowledge. So this is a great opportunity for Milton, and the first time we've had this opportunity to partner with surrounding communities as a cluster, and, and be involved in this grant. Bay State Community Services is going to be writing the grant, and the lead applicant is Quincy. And we're really happy that they included us in this grant.
How will the grant funds be shared amongst the communities, do we know, or...
So it's going to be shared among the four communities, it's a $100,000 grant that we're asking for, for a duration of three years, with an option to be renewed twice, so it's like a seven-year period of the grant, it ends in 2022.
Mm-hmm.
What's going to happen is they're going to ask for funds for full-time staff member, one person, which includes the benefits for that person, to administer the grant. And after they spend the money for the grants, to hire this person, and for their health insurance, the four communities will share $7,500 amongst the four communities yearly, to, you know, build strategies against, you know, for substance abuse prevention, and so it's...
How is that, how is the knowledge distributed to people that need the help?
So it's collecting data, really, it's building a strategic framework, prevention framework, is what's, is the goal here, to assess the community and get the data, and to find out what the problems are in each community, and to address them. So we really need data going forward, and to build partnerships with these other communities, I think, is, is really wonderful, because they do have a lot of resources that we don't have in Milton, and we can build these partnerships with the other towns.
You, I'm just after coming off raising three teenage daughters, or two of them are in their twenties now, but drugs was always on the, you know, on, on my mind when they were growing up. How far ahead of the curve are you with getting data on what's the new drug out on the street for these kids? For example, this, when you sat in front of us last year, Vicky, that drug, Molly, was, was hot.
That's right.
Were you ahead of the curve there, and how, what kind of data do you get to give these kids to prevent them from using it?
Well, to, you know, to be truthful, Quincy, of course, Waymouth has been doing the work for a while, Braintree is more, is newer, but not as new as we are. And it's really more of a prevention model than it is a treatment model, this particular grant.
Right.
So it's, although we do get resources and we're able to send people in the right direction, I, the real goal is to have a prevention, as Caroline said, it's called a strategic prevention framework, that's what the state is asking us to...
So it's more or less like a planning grant?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. But being with these other communities that have been in this work for a long time, you're really gaining the knowledge that they have, for instance, the Learning to Cope Group, which is a parent support group for opiate users.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a Quincy-based group, it's gotten so big, I mean, Milton parents are using that group, they're having to find bigger spaces. So in other words, there's already people out there utilizing some of the treatment, so to speak, or resources or support, this will just help us be a little bit more coordinated, and also to have a specific plan, that's the whole idea of it, you have to have a
You have to have a plan. You can't just be reacting to what's going on. You have to know... It's a whole process. It's a whole process. So it's assessment, capacity, planning, implementation, and evaluation. So it's a long process, but we have to get the data to find out what the problems are in Milton to address them.
Excellent. Let me make a motion to...
I think we have a revised motion. Okay.
To agree that the town of Milton will participate in the Massachusetts Substance Abuse Prevention Collaborative. Department of Public Health requests for response, document number 160222, with Quincy, Waymouth, and Braintree to prevent underage drinking and other drug use across the Commonwealth.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your being here tonight.
Thank you.
For waiting.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is a hearing on unbilled sewer charges for 329 Canton Avenue. And I believe we have, you must be Mary Moore?
Yep. How about you?
Welcome, Ms. Moore.
How are you doing?
Good, Mary.
Hi.
And I'll just mention our assistant town administrator, Michael Blanchard, is also present. He conducted the initial...
Correct.
...review and appeal in this matter. So we'll open a hearing in this, and Ms. Moore, we have your written information, but if, why don't you, would you like to give us a little bit of a background or a presentation on this?
Did you already review that?
Yes, we have your written comments, but anything that you would like to present to us?
No, other than the fact that my parents, I've written stuff down myself, did live in the town for over thirty-five years, and when this situation arose last year, my mother had just recently been diagnosed with cancer. So when she got the letter, my mother was legally blind. I take care of all their stuff, and she was really upset. So I called and up to the town and asked, you know, what it was, because I haven't lived in the town in thirty years myself. And it was explained to me that my parents had not been paying sewer charges, and my mother was completely unaware of it, and my father did not know either. And I couldn't understand how, for thirty-five years, something like that could even be an oversight to begin with. My parents, when they bought the house, it was brand-new. And I spoke with a woman first, I think her name was Darlene, and then she had given me the name of somebody else to speak to. So I did, and it was Mr. Lynch, and I just said, how does, how does something like this happen? How can something for thirty-five years go undetected and just be noticed? And he said, it was, and there was some other houses that were involved in it, which I said, okay. So I said, where is that going to, where is that going to take us? And he said, well, he said, we're not going back on it, it's going forward. I said, okay, that's fine. I understand, I explained that to my mother. He also, and then I also went into detail, because they do have a sprinkler system, so I'm like, well, obviously that's going to, you know, take effect. And he discussed with me a device that they could put in, and I said, you know what? Let's just, let's go through the season. I understand, I explained to my mother. So that's where I got a little upset when I get a letter, because my parents have since both passed away in April and May.
Mary, can I ask, sorry to cut, was the sprinkler system on a separate meter or on the same meter?
No, everything is the same. All of it's the same.
Yep, sorry.
So my parents, as I explained, passed away in April and May, and I put the house on the market several months ago, and I get a letter in the mail in October stating that we're going to go back four to six years, you know, four years or six years, whatever it might be. And I'm like, I don't understand why this is happening. I mean, I realize I did not come up here, get anything in writing from somebody at that time. Both my parents were sick, it wasn't a priority. I took for granted, when I was on the phone with, you know, Mr. Lynch, that this was going to be a done deal, and we weren't going to go back, you know, any further. So since then, I just feel it is not, was not something that my parents deliberately did. My parents never knew that there was any type of bill, because honestly, I've been paying her bills for fifteen years. When the bill come in and it said water, I paid the total. I didn't look to see, I just paid the total water bill. And I just think, feel at this point that, you know, I don't understand why my siblings and I should bear the hardship of something that I do not feel was an issue that my parents neglected. They certainly did not know about it, and if they had, and I, looking back into this letter right here, it says that there are some owners that have voluntarily come forward, and I think that's, you know, that's great that they did that. And had my parents known, I'm sure they probably would have been the first two up here. But I just, on principle alone, I do not think it's right that they should have to incur a five thousand five hundred dollar, even if it is only going back to four years, based on the fact that I spoke to someone here, and they said it wasn't going backwards, and then all of a sudden, it's going forward.
Just one quick question. See, the house is thirty-five years old, and your parents bought it new.
Yes.
Was it connected to the town's sewerage from when it was brand-new, or was...
Well, I don't know. You know, the builder, when he built it, I mean, I honestly don't know, because I was...
And you acknowledge that they never added sewerage after they...
No, no. The builder, I mean, the builder built, there were several houses that he built. He built the one beside, and I think the one, I think the one or two behind, I'm not even actually sure, because I moved in there, I mean, I was in my last year of high school, so it's not anything that I would really know.
Okay.
Do we have other questions or comments for Ms. Moore?
Mary, you mentioned, how many houses were built at that particular time?
I know the one next to my parents was, it's to the left of them.
By the same builder?
By the same builder, and I think the one that's diagonal, it's a brown one, and I think it's actually on, I think it's on Voses. I think those three were built in around the same time, by the same person.
Interesting to see if the, if the other two are on sewer.
Yeah, which I'm sure, I'm sure we've probably checked, but I guess my point is, if, if Mary's house is not on sewer and the other two are, maybe it's just an error by the town, I don't know, but I think it might be worth looking into. Well, I guess the problem is, you know, we took that into consideration when we went through the agreement, that there was no way to determine, and the agreement tried to, we tried to draft an agreement that wasn't really placing blame or fault on either side, just saying that the facts are the facts, that there has been, you know, that the house has been receiving free sewerage for a number of years, and to go back for a period of time, the law technically would have allowed us to go back probably further than that. We chose not to, and chose not to try and place any blame or even try and figure out what the cause was. And clearly, we recognize it could be that, it could be that all the permits were pulled, and somewhere along the line, the town lost the paperwork, or it could be an illegal connection. We didn't want to figure out which was which. We just decided to, all the ones that were illegally hooked up, or hooked up and not receiving bills, I shouldn't say illegally hooked up, hooked up and not receiving bills, we decided to go back either four or six years.
Yeah, I think the policy does say in certain circumstances, it could be more than the six years, it could be back to the, from the first connection, but that's only, that's in very limited circumstances. So, so the, do we have, is there anything else that you want to add? I think we should take any other factual information, and we can discuss it among ourselves.
No, I don't have anything. I mean, I'm here tonight, they had the letter, he has me on his last meeting, and I don't think I have anything else to...
Okay. We do have Michael here, if there's any questions for Michael, or if there's any further information that needed to be added.
Are we going to vote tonight?
Yes, yes. Why don't we get all the factual information out, and then we can have a discussion about it. I don't see anyone else here from the public, but if there's anyone else who wanted to address this, they should come.
I do have one other question. The sprinkler system, had the sprinkler system been in place for a number of years, or is that relatively new?
Honestly, I can't even answer you that. I only lived there probably four or five years before I moved out, so...
Was it in then, do you know?
I don't think so, but I honestly don't know if that's something that he put in. I really, I can't, I can't even help you out with that.
It seems, Ms. Moore, that you're, you had two comments, really. One was that the policy in and of itself was not fair, and then the second point seemed to be that you're...
Well, I think what I'm, probably a little bit more is that when I made that initial phone call back when the first letter came out, and spoke in depth with somebody, and purposely said, what is going to happen and where is this going to go? And when the person, you know, and then there's no recollection of it, and to say that, no, we're not going to go back, we're going to go forward, and then all of a sudden, you know, now we're going forward. So I took it for granted that, yes, I totally agree with going forward. If there was something wrong, let's go forward. And I explained that to my mom and dad that time, and they're like, okay. And again, you know, they're like, how does it go on for thirty-five years and someone does not detect it? You know, I mean, they're getting a water bill, they're paying the water bill, and how would someone know? Like when you get your credit card bill, you get your total, and if there's going to be a breakdown, there's the breakdown, you pay your bill. And then for someone to say, no, we're not going to go backward, and then all of a sudden, you know, my parents passed away, I don't know of anything that's going on in the town of Milton. I don't live in Milton, I live in Braintree. And then to find out that, you know, I put the house in the market, and then I'm getting a letter in October saying, okay, we're going to bill you fifty-five hundred dollars, and we're going to go back four years.
Yeah. And just to explain a little bit of that, and that's what I thought was your second argument, was your first point seemed to be that the policy itself was unfair, but the second piece of that seemed to be that the prospective, you thought it was going to be applied prospectively, and it's, it's actually being applied retroactively as well, for four years. The policy does provide for six years for a look-back period based on the statute of limitations, but we did, I believe this was in the first group that was identified, so when there was a reference earlier to people coming forward, that was really for, once we made, once the DPW made it known that there was this problem, they'd identified a number of homes that probably were not, there was no record that they were connected to the town's system, but it was believed that they were, and that some of the septic records between the Board of Health and the DPW weren't matching up. So that there was a problem identified, and the idea was, if identified X number of them, I think it was something like twenty-two, and then subsequently, if anyone else who wasn't on the initial list came forward, then there'd be an opportunity to only go back four years rather than six years, because it's saving us a little bit of administrative work and cost there. So that's the reason for the four years rather than the six years, and the reference to coming forward.